All right, are we all ready? Let's call the order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll call Mr. Ayer. Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
Mrs. Brownite.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Vanstone.
Here.
And Mr. York.
Here.
All right. Any question regarding the minutes for the April 14 meeting? Not a motion in a second to accept. So move.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Hi.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Brownite.
Hi.
Dr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Vanstone.
Hi.
Mr. York.
Hi.
All right. It's up to minutes. All right, in communications, it looks like we have something from Mr. Erdl. A spending request. A little overage on Patriots Lane. Chris, do you want to explain to us?
Correct. So in your packet, you'll have a spending request. This completes the Patriots Lane project. The simplest answer is we used a lot of asphalt more than I anticipated because of the deterioration of the land itself. I also threw in the knowledge the picnic pad was also replaced, so that also included in the asphalt cost. So this will close it out for the books and we move on to 25.
Did you sound clear on that? We're calling it a parking pad, but it was that.
I call it a picnic pad.
Yeah, picnic pad or something. Did they? They didn't dig that out, did they? Did they just?
So we left the mill and then paved it, and when we put the mill on top of the picnic pad, it sunk. So then we replaced it.
Oh, we did. Okay, wait, so we did replace it?
Yes.
Okay, and then we rebased it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
It should last a long time.
Yeah. As long as the picnic goes on.
Yes.
Okay, any questions regarding that? Are we all clear on what we need the money for here?
It looks not.
Yeah. All right.
It's a spending request, yeah.
Yeah, it's a spending request. All right, motion. Let's have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Hi.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Brownite.
Hi.
Dr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Vanstone.
Hi.
Mr. York.
Hi.
All right. Permission to address council? Any commentary tonight? No? No? I want to thank you, though. You could stand up for a second.
Me?
Yeah, you. Yeah, you. I mean, I can't begin to thank you enough. I mean, the human job that you guys are doing cleaning up these parks and organizing it, you know, sort of seeing it through. I understand the weather. It was on Saturday, right?
It was Sunday.
On Sunday, because I know the weather wasn't great on Saturday.
We hit it right on Sunday.
Okay, great. All right. All right, well, again, I can't thank you enough.
We're getting great resident volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
That's a good game.
Yeah. It's that kind of volunteerism by the residents that I, you know, I mean, that just, you know, that's the essence of good community, that, you know, to have participation like that. I can't, you know. I occasionally see them and I thank them.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so no one else then, huh? Nope. Okay. Well, then, let's move on. Any question regarding the bills? Let's pay some bills now if there's.
So I have a question. The formulas at the test courts, are those still there or have we?
The water's turned on now.
Water's turned on, so we can?
We can call to have those removed.
Once the water's turned on, yeah. Get them out of the...
Well, it kind of requires me hearing this.
But, well, you guys turn it on, right?
Yeah, I turn it off.
Okay, okay.
Well, and we wait. I think you do all the right things in terms of waiting, because it can get cold often late in the year, so.
We've had those pipes burst before.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. All right, well, on tomorrow, we'll see, but make calls. Any other question regarding the bills? No? All right, well, motion in a second to pay the bills.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Hi.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Brownite.
Hi.
Dr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Vanstone.
Hi.
Mr. York.
Hi.
All right, let's pay some bills. All right, we have three committee reports tonight, and I think Susan, possibly you're up first, correct?
The Rules and Law Committee met April 21st, 2025, 4:30 a.m. President of Councilmember Susan Brownite, Matt Ayer, Dr. Marcy Lewis, Mayor Bill Brown, Building Engineer Rod Hallway, and residents here are the ones who signed into this session. Matt Ayer will assess and make recommendations about whether to untable the updated sand bridge sign legislation that regulates permitting locations and standards for sand bridge signs on and around the square, or to determine that said regulation is not needed and recommend to permanently table the legislation and remove it from the Council Committee action items to be discussed at the next Rules and Law Committee meeting. Two, refine Code Section 151, 075, and Code Section 150. Matt Ayer to review the historical code to compare with other jurisdictions to assess the code and make recommendations for updates. Three, the need for a policy regarding using public property for private business purposes. The committee discussed several examples of when citizens and entities utilize public property for private gain. There is already code, Code 9509, that addresses this and gives the mayor the discretion to determine which events are or are not in the village's interest. Given the breadth of examples, however, it is recommended that we give our village a better means of enforcement and protection if something were to happen. As such, a motion was made by Matt Ayer to create a form that any third party is required to complete to utilize public property for personal gain. Form will be required for any, this, excuse me, this form will be required for any event or experience where a formal contract is not in place and will indemnify the village from damages and require proof of insurance coverage. The village at any time may ask for the participating third party to review this form. Approval remains at the mayor's discretion per Code Section 9509, seconded by Susan Brownite. Motion passed unanimously. Marymount Code of Ordinance recodification, motion to endorse the recodification and seek pricing, made by Susan Brownite and seconded by Dr. Marcy Lewis. Motion passed unanimously. Code Section 101 needs to be removed from the Rules and Law Agenda in Council Committee action items as there is no Section 101 for the code. The meeting was adjourned at 5:48.
All right, you've heard the report. Any comments, any discussion?
Sounds like Matt's got some problems.
Matt's going to be a busy man.
It's not bad.
Matt, just so you know.
No, I've got work to do, but I don't want to get bothered.
Okay. The only part that I still wasn't clear about was on the sandwich board sign, so to speak. I know we had that discussion. Are we going to establish, like, a standard? I mean, you know, a certain, it can only be a certain size, a certain color, a certain lettering. Do we really get that far? You know, we talked about it.
We did. The legislation has standards within it, and we made the decision to table. So now we are assessing whether or not to untable it or to permanently table it. There is, right now, not a reactive need for that legislation. So the question is, do we want to regulate sandwich signs or not? And that we're going to take a closer look and make a final decision at the next committee meeting.
I think this became an issue primarily. You say, do we want to regulate sandwich signs? I think initially, I mean, it became an issue because they seemed to be sort of running wild with sandwich signs, and it was sort of, you know, just a hodgepodge of different size, signs, colors, and so on, and numbered and so forth. So we decided to, you know, that we would start to take a look at it.
It was, my understanding is that it was brought to us by a property owner, and the question was, do we regulate or are we able to regulate the signs in the right way, I believe? There wasn't a diversity of standards, to be honest with you. I believe we put standards in the legislation, because why not? We also created a map and identified locations, costs, et cetera. So the question again, and it's really, to be honest, a little bit philosophical, which is, do we want to regulate an item that perhaps resolved itself, people self-regulate it? As government, do we want to do that or not? And so we're going to take a look at the, a little bit closer, and make a decision as committee and then make recommendations. But the legislation is drafted with a good degree of detail related to all of that.
Okay. Well, my only thought about this is, I mean, obviously, it's nice when things sort of self-resolve and, you know, we don't have to get that involved sometimes, but my experience would be is that, you know, things seem to go in cycles. I mean, what is self-resolved at the moment becomes unresolved, you know, later on, and then we're right back at square one and we don't have anything. But I'm assuming this is in part what you're working on.
Yeah, one of the big things I want to do is, we have a limit on the number, I think it's six if I remember right, and, but one of the things that we talked about is that business over in Old Town may want a sandwich sign, maybe there's many too, there's sandwich signs in Old Town. And then along Miami, where we have some businesses, one of which has been using a sandwich sign, but we're already up to three and we haven't gotten over to the Strand yet, or on Madisonville Road, we have business there, like a new bookstore or something that wants a sandwich sign. So one of the first things I want to do is just kind of walk it and talk to some of the business owners perhaps, but just kind of come up with what would be a reasonable number and why.
Well, I'm going to push back. I mean, the debate will happen in the committee.
Correct.
But we had that debate, a robust debate of how many and why, and identified locations that they were permitted. Now we can re, we will reassess it, but we just have to take a look at it again because the immediate demand for it was, kind of, Rod asked for it to be tabled as a building administrator.
Right.
And so now we're just, so there will be space and time to have this debate and for you to present your concerns, right?
Right.
And revisit the map.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But a lot of work went in. The legislation was finalized by Ed. We had a first vote, I believe. I can't, don't quote me on that, and we tabled it after that.
No, that's, part of my problem is, I get a little, you know, foggy out myself, you know, because it was a while ago.
Yeah.
And I know we had set out to do something, and that seemed to fall off the radar and now.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
It was a unexpected tabling, and then, so now we just have to be intentional.
My recollection is, we just discussed on, in front of the Strand. We didn't discuss Old Town.
That is absolutely fair.
Okay.
Yep.
Or, or along Miami.
We mentioned it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when we made that recommendation, it was specifically in front of the Strand, is what I recall.
That you forgot on any review.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll leave that item on the agenda and mark it as tabled?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
And we will remove the, review the code and the recodification, remove those items. Do we want to leave the other two items?
Yeah, they're not complete yet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so motion in a second then to accept this report.
So move. Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Hi.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mr. Brownite.
Hi.
Dr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Vanstone.
Hi.
Mr. York.
Hi.
All right. Okay, Randy, I believe you're up next.
All righty. The Health and Recreation Committee met on Wednesday, April 23rd, in council chambers. Present at the meeting were Health and Recreation Committee members Randy York, Matthew Ayer, and Susan Brownite. Also in attendance were Mayor Brown, Village Engineer Chris Earl, Jim Getz, Maggie Kenner, and Doug Dunk. The purpose of the committee meeting was to review quotes for the Dogwood Park Centennial renovation and to review the Marymount Park Board report. The committee reviewed the April 23rd, 2025, April Parks Advisory Board report, which we attached and is attached to your council packet, and the committee unanimously agreed to, one, an expenditure of $1,000 from the Service Department budget for the purchase of landscaping materials for Living Good Park. Landscape design was developed by the Park Board and will be installed by volunteer hours. Two, an expenditure of $500 for the purchase of Park Board volunteer T-shirts. These funds will come from the $1,000 that the Village Council approved for Park Board operations in 2025. And three, to authorize the Park Board to solicit bids for the contracting of a landscape architect to develop plans for Marymount Parks. The committee also reviewed the plan for the execution of the construction for the rehabilitation of Dogwood Park. The committee will prepare a report with the projected timetable, project phasing, and a cash flow diagram that accounts for the specific requirements for each grant. In the near term, the committee unanimously agreed to authorize Village Engineer Earl to prepare a bid package for the phase of the Dogwood Centennial Rehabilitation Project that includes the baseball fields, athletic fields, and irrigation. The meeting adjourned at 5:30 p.m.
All right, you've heard the report. Any comments, any discussions? I just have one quick question. The landscape architect would be paid out of what fund?
We gave impermanent improvements, we, we had, there's $3,400 in Ann Button Becker Park, and we put $11,500 in the capital improvement budget for planning.
Okay.
So the total of those two is $14,952. I don't believe we'll come in, or close to that.
Okay, okay. But this, so this says Marymount Parks, is this, this is Ann Button Becker and other parks then?
I think that depending, and I may call Jim up to talk about this, the two focus parks are Ann Button Becker and Concourse. But part of the vision for the Park Board is to identify each park, what it's used for, and how it fits together with the other parks. So does that come into scope? And I think as they talk to landscape architects, that may or may not come into scope.
Just because that Ann Button Becker Park can only use it for something that's Ann Button Becker Park related.
Correct.
So if you, if you expand the scope of the project work beyond Ann Button Becker Park, you shouldn't be able to use funds for that specific thing. So the, so I'm, so I'm clear. So the architect could only do plans for Ann Button Becker? Using that fund?
Using the fund.
Using that fund.
Yeah.
Permanent Improvement Fund, to your point, maybe. I'm just trying to make sure we're all in. I know Kelly's all over this problem, so I'm not.
So it's possible that we may get these bids, however this works, and say, okay, this is specifically for Ann Button Becker, because I think we ought to probably try to utilize that money.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, we had it for...
You know, as, as we develop all this, maybe we can phase the projects, let's do this project, let's do that project, and let's do this project, and I would think we could easily structure it like that, to use that money first.
If I advise it on the end voice, can you pay part of it from one fund and part of it from another fund?
We can split.
If it's broken out?
Yeah.
Good question.
Quick question about the bids, it's a legal question, I think, because we had some questions raised about the tree board and trees last year, is my recollection. Is everybody okay with the Park Board going out and doing those bids, or do we have to get a village official involved in that loop?
How do I see this being executed? Is they get quotes necessarily, and those come to the Health and Recreation Committee, re-review them, our village solicitor reviews them, our village engineers review them, and then at some point, perhaps, we would come back to this body and say, we reviewed these, here's our recommendation.
Isn't Ben involved in getting some of those quotes anyway? For the tree board, for tree limbing up?
Who?
Yes.
Other things like that? So, I mean, his fingers in the pipe as well.
But you were just quick to ask that here. I didn't want to come and say, all you didn't get enough bids, or is this really a better bid, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we had, to your point, Bob, we have said in the past, we should get two bids. That's always been the goal, is you should always have at least two bids to make sure that we're getting the best value. So to your point, I think that would be appropriate to ask for.
And they do. I'm sure they do.
Honestly, I just didn't want us to get into a...
And I just also, I'd like to also publicly recognize Jim and the Park Board, and Ben and his team for the work that, I think we're probably up to 130 volunteer hours, something like that, and the parks look great. They look as good as I remember, so thank you, Ben, thank you, Jim, and your team.
I'm giving you a round of applause.
I'm lathering it on here.
Oh, I was going to say.
They deserve it.
Randy, I don't have a...
How long will the passage of the commitment be?
I might need to wear my boots next time.
Hey, Randy, how does this fit with, for the Concourse project? You know, just, just place, replacing the trust, you know, trellises.
Trellis.
Trellises, thank you. Trellises, because we built that into the permanent improvement fund to do it this year, and, so that's not, is that not part of this? Because that just works through half of the gardens, right? So that, can that proceed without waiting for this?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely, yeah. I think that, and I've been involved in the emails bouncing back and forth, you know, what should be planted there? Does the wisteria work? What was, what was the original plan? Because the original plan was not all wisteria, it was different colors of plantings. So my understanding is the Park Board's going to respect those original plans and come up with a plan moving forward. You know, the walkway needs to be addressed, the drainage needs to be addressed, the tree cover needs to be addressed, so that's kind of what they're looking for.
The trellises, because there was also the tuck points and all those kinds of stuff part of that too. Well, no, okay, you're right, because remember, we had the thing power washed last year at some point, and I guess that, did that money come out of the trellis budget? I don't remember. And then we were going to get a bid for the tuck point work as well. But, okay, two bids. But, but we did, we built that money because we all said, that's the number one project, you know, this group voted, and sort of the department hands all the orders, that's the number one project. It's just, not what you're discussing, but just getting the trellises and all that stuff done, so we ultimately get that. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't going to slow that down, because I know we'd all like to get that done. And, you know, and I'm about to buy more cedar, so I'm hoping the money's there.
Oh, no, there's money.
You know, we have money.
There's like 30 something thousand.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we haven't really spent out of that this year much at all.
Should we do the tuck pointing first?
I thought already some was already done. No?
No, there was, it was washed.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be washed so that you can have a better evaluation of just how much tuck pointing should be done. I would say, on the west wing, you could start it, but I don't want to be working on the eastern wing and cause the disturbance over there on fresh tuck point, and then have the guy have to come back. But...
Yeah, that would be an oops.
So, yeah, so do we have, like, a project timeline for that thing? Yeah, we do, we do. Yes, I'm beginning, you know, I'm beginning to hear the rumblings, but, you know, the weather is now getting better, and I, in fact, I was talking to Rod about it today, and we're kind of putting together, you know, a plan of when we're going to get it done. Again, that's what I think we put, I mean, that's what we recommended, we put some extra money into the, to try and make sure we get it done this year. We need to use, you know, we, you've done a great job of using, keeping the resource spending as tight as possible, but I think it's just been, I think we said, hey, let's try and get that done. So that's why you put extra money in. We're getting it done, but, you know, I'm an artist, I can't be rushed. Thank you, Mr. Ayer.
Michelangelo, that was a good one.
I don't know.
About what percentage of the, I should note this, I live right across the street, how about the new trellis is up?
On the western side?
On the whole thing?
Well, well, I mean, obviously, we started it with the western wing.
Right.
You know, kind of a thing, and that was, that's within about, you know, there's probably a remaining, I would say, 15% of that to be done. In fact, I already have the cross members in motion, which is a matter of putting it up there, and my plan is to, obviously, to finish that first, and then I'm going to start work on the eastern wing, and, you know, so...
So 65% still needs to be done?
Of the entire project, yes.
Yes, of just, of just the trellis.
Right.
Yes.
But, you know, we're getting into a groove of the work. I mean, you know, things, you know, and Rod and I have been sort of talking a little bit as ways to possibly speed it up.
Yeah, just leave it. Thank you.
Well, it was more money, but... I know, I know, yes, I know, we've allowed for it, so...
Would it be reasonable to ask to see a schedule at our next meeting, before our next meeting, and what in the next council packet? You and Rod, you got the schedule?
I can't work under those kind of resources. I can't. I mean, I, I'll thumbnail something for you, but, I mean, yeah, look, guys, I mean, I'm somewhat limited, you know, I have to get Ben and a couple of guys over there, and that means I have to pull them off other work. But that's why, that's why I thought we split extra money in, is so that we weren't pulling Ben's group. Well, that's, that's to, that's to fabricate some of the parts. The install is a different deal.
Right, but don't you build that into the schedule? I mean, it doesn't mean that your schedule is going to be one that's, that's going to get done as soon as possible. It's just the community wants to...
Yeah, I know, yes, I know they want to have it finished. I know they want to have it finished, yes.
And it would be good to kind of see that, how we're going to, and so forth.
I think, once I get started on the western or on the eastern wing, which will be shortly, I will say that, I mean, that, you're going to see work progressing then, and it'll look like, you know, maybe, maybe that guy's actually doing something over there. But, you know, but, you know, my hands are semi-tied a little bit. I mean, I don't have a crew that I can just take over there at will. I've got a lot of things to... But that's what the money was for, was to... To give you the resources you need. And I, in fact, I may be tapping those, yes, I may be tapping those, but I would think I should be, you know, this is my project, and I should be allowed to work it, and if and when I decide I'm stuck, then we'll get, you know, we'll call up the troops. But you know, Rob, or Randy, you guys could volunteer over there with me any day.
Ooh, there it is.
I do work 40 hours a week. Well, you know. Still got a full-time job.
All right.
All right.
So I'm going to see...
Yes, it's moving forward.
So can I just summarize what I thought I heard?
Sure.
So, so that we can, we're going to finish the trellising, then do the tuck pointing, then I'm assuming we address the sidewalk, it's been repaved, and then the landscaping.
Well, the landscaping then...
And the trellis, whatever's growing up the trellis.
Yeah, that's kind of Jim and his group, they will make a call, or they will make Yeah, that's kind of Jim and his group, they will make a call, or they will make a recommendation on that. It'll go into Randy's committee.
But do I have the order of things, right?
Yes, more or less, that is correct.
And we talked, exchanged emails a bit about this. My guess is they put together a plan with options. We have a public meeting there, here's what we're doing, get public input, adapt according to the public input.
Sure.
Bring it here, as far as funding and when it happens, how much it is, until we get it, we won't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you remember offhand, Jim? Do you remember offhand what other plants were recommended originally besides wisteria? Were they climbing plants?
Yeah, they were climbing. We do have the original lips.
Okay.
And it was, it was graded by colors going in. And that's one thing that we're sort of kicking around is.
That would be beautiful.
Wisteria is nice, but it lasts for, what, two weeks in purple, and then it's green the rest. But there's a lot of different vines, the electronic vines are.
So that they would be blooming at different times?
Yeah, or have color throughout the summer.
That'd be beautiful.
That's exactly what we're looking at, is how we can take it back and really looking at the Nolan plan and see what was envisioned initially.
That's great, that's, that's beautiful.
All right. Do we vote this yet?
No.
All right, make a motion.
I can't make a motion on my own.
I make a motion to approve the report.
Give us a second, second. Mr. Air, Mr. Bartlett, Mrs. Brownite, Dr. Lewis, Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
All right. All right, Bob, I believe you're next, correct?
The Public Works and Service Committee met on April 22, 2025 at 4:02 PM. In attendance were Committee Chairperson Bob Vanstone, Committee Members Randy York and Rob Bartlett, Mayor Bill Brown, Fiscal Officer Kelly Rankin, Supervisor Ben James, Zoning Officer, and Zoning Officer Hallway, Village Engineer Chris Earl, and Council Member Dr. Mercy Lewis. The first agenda item was an initial review of an initial assessment of the workload in the service department. Supervisor James presented the results of the initial assessment, which is attached to this report. That assessment showed the need for one additional person in the service department. Supervisor James noted the heavy workload from April through July, largely due to cutting grass, and from October through December, largely due to legal moving. Fiscal Officer Rankin and Mayor Brown noted that based on legal and insurance issues, if a person were to be added to the service department, the best path forward would be to add a part-time employee. There was extensive discussion on the workload in the service department. There were concerns that there had been inadequate consideration of the various types of contracts for specific tasks, and lack of benchmarking for service departments of similar communities. It was acknowledged that those types of evaluativeness will take time, and there was an immediate need for help in the Marymont Service Department for grass cutting season. Mr. York moved that the service department shall add a part-time employee through December 31, 2025. And the employees shall work an average of 25 hours a week, not to exceed 30 hours per week. This is contingent that Rod Hallway and Ben James completed a full benchmarking and evaluation of the workload and purchase services in the service departments of Terrace Park and Newtown, which shall be reported to the Public Service Committee no later than mid-November 2025. The motion was seconded by Mr. Vanstone. The committee unanimously approved the motion. The committee also agreed that all citizen requests for service department work should be sent to the mayor. The discussion of the service department ended approximately 5:10. Ms. Rankin, Mr. James, Mr. Hallway, and Dr. Lewis were not present for the discussion of the second agenda item, which was a street repaving plan and application for 2026 sort of grants. Mr. Vanstone reported that the village engineers' assessments of street condition had poor streets in poor condition with an estimated repaving cost of $287,000 and change. The numerous streets of bare condition had an estimated repair cost of over $3.4 million. The village 2025 and 2026 repaving plan is complicated because the village will not be notified of the small government grant award paving Pleasant from Marymont to Marymont, that loop, until May 9. And the 2026 sort of grant applications are due at the end of May. The chairperson, working with Mr. Earl and Ms. Rankin, developed a plan for most scenarios. After some discussion, the committee unanimously approved both plans, which are attached to this report. Plan A is for if the small government, small government grant is awarded to Marymont. And Plan B is when the village does not win the grant. The committee recommended that Chris Earl be instructed to bear and submit the appropriate sort of grant applications. The committee also recommended that the engineer be authorized to go out for bids on the streets to be repaged in 2025 as soon as the village is notified of the small government grant position. The meeting was adjourned at 5:40 PM.
All right, you've heard the grants. Lot of information in there. Any questions?
Well, I, I got a question. They recommend hiring a part-time employee to work, I presume, from now until December of '25. But then they say that recommendation is contingent upon receiving a report that's not due until November. So, when's this part-time employee gonna start?
The agreement was we, maybe sloppy wording here, there, the.
Wait, wait, the committee recommends this with the understanding that Holloway and, okay, I got you.
I totally agree.
All right, that's fine.
If we want to take the contingent, change your word.
Yeah, okay.
I fully accept the revision.
Okay. So, you're gonna hire the guy right now? Okay.
I think we all understand the spirit.
I think it's got, I mean, it's got a good recommendation, just change that over.
Just take it out?
But no, just say, instead of contingent, just say, under, with the understanding.
And I will tell you, I think this is a better recommendation than trying to hire an independent contractor, because Bill and I kind of went through the legal and insurance issues on it. And I think an independent contractor could potentially be a nightmare for the village. So, I think that this is a much better way to do it.
All you, all you have to say is delete this is contingent that, but Rod Holloway and Ben James will complete a full benchmarking of the workload and purchase services.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion or nothing?
So, make it a motion to.
Well, do we?
Amend the report.
Motion to amend the report to delete this is contingent that, and add after Ben James.
Second.
Everybody understands the motion, correct? Okay, second, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
Okay.
Robert, have you figured out what the comment you want to put in for the national?
We had a discussion, the sort of grants should be a 50%.
You should probably put that in the, probably you should put that in the report, too.
Well, it's in the attachment.
Okay. Yeah, there were a lot of back.
Because it has how much for the grant, how much for Marymont, I don't, I didn't think we had to add that in there.
I have a quick question for Ed. On the agenda here, Ed, we, apparently, we tabled.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have done that first.
The first report, and so we need to.
Can I, can I make a motion?
To get that off, you mean?
I would like to.
Is that, well, hold on a second, I mean, that's the procedure here.
Table, what, we.
Well, we.
Yes.
The last thing in the table is a report. And that's when we're gonna go for the independent contractor. So, we just wanna.
What, what does somebody to say?
I'm table.
Oh, yeah, just take that off. Move to take it off the agenda, that's all you gotta do.
Just move to take it off the agenda.
I'm going to take it off the, the previous table before it off the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
Okay. And now that I've lost my place, have we, did we vote the actual committee report yet?
We did.
Yes.
Okay, we're all good. All right. We have a couple of resolutions here. The Memorial Day Parade, of course, will be on Monday, May the 26th. Looking forward to a really big parade this year. I love the parade. And of course, village offices will be closed in observation on Memorial Day on Monday, May the 26th.
So, we don't have a council meeting that evening, do we?
I think we are supposed to have.
Oh, we still have it, we're still having, because it's on the schedule.
It is on.
It's on the master schedule.
Yeah, that'd be the second month, or fourth Monday.
Do you want to have it on the 26th?
Are we good for having it, or you don't, it's Memorial Day, you don't want?
On Memorial Day?
Yeah, apparently it's scheduled.
Typically, they've hit on the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
I mean, why give people a day off if they're gonna have to?
Yeah, I might not even be in town.
Okay, so we want to move it to.
June.
We want to move it to May the 27th, which would be a Tuesday. Is that everyone's understanding? Okay, so do we have a motion for that?
So move.
So move. Second, all right, Mr. Air. Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll be moving the May 26th council meeting to May the 27th on that Tuesday.
At 6:30.
Okay.
At 6:30, of course.
Okay. We're ready for resolutions.
Good call, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Uh, yes, we're ready.
Thank you, Randy.
All right.
Ready for the resolutions.
A resolution to create a tax incentive review council and confirm the appointment of members, third reading.
All right, motion and a second to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
So, though now that we're official.
Yes, we need to be thinking about scheduling the first meeting.
So, I made these email addresses from you, and you did the email, and we can get together and write it together.
Sure, yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, a resolution authorizing application and contracting with the Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority, second reading.
Second reading, any questions regarding this? Everybody know what this is? We're all good? Chris, no comment?
No comment.
Second reading, we'll have the third reading next week?
All right, not next week, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next council.
All right, supplemental appropriations, first reading.
All right. Second reading will be next council.
Okay, to authorize the solicitation of bids for 2025 tennis court improvements and to declare emergency.
All right, we've had the first reading. I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second, third reading.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
May we have the second reading, please?
To authorize the solicitation of bids for 2025 tennis court improvements and to declare emergency.
All right, second reading, everyone, does, are we all clear? Is there any questions regarding this?
To.
Is that for all the improvements, including the pickleball courts?
Right.
That's something.
No, it says pickleball.
That's in the pickleball term.
It says it, I'm there.
Yes.
All right, third reading, please.
To authorize the solicitation of bids for 2025 tennis court improvements and to declare emergency.
All right, a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
So move. Second. Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion and a second to evoke the emergency clause, please.
So move.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
I know that the pickleball committee raised $100,000 and change for this, and the village is gonna kick in 40?
Forty-four, is what we put into the budget.
And then what about the additional work on the tennis courts? What's budgeted for that?
They should do it.
This is, yeah, this.
It's all of it?
Yeah.
They had, they had some original estimates, so they had some original estimates that were created that gave the ballpark for this. And that actually had a lower fundraising by the committee, and so they decided to raise it, just to be there on the safe side. This is like 80 and 44, so.
There was quite a bit of a buffer.
Yeah, yeah, so they bumped it up to like $2,000. So, this is supposed to cover all of that stuff.
Well, let's hope for a good bid.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So, part of that pickleball money will go to repair the tennis courts, is that what you're saying?
So, how this was strong version was the repair of the courts, six, you know, five, five and seven is a maintenance expense, so it's being paid for the general fund. The building of the four dedicated pickleball courts is being paid for by the, by the money that was raised. Because that's truly more like capital spend, and that's gonna happen.
And that won't exceed $140,000?
Those two things combined, yeah. So, then again, they did those original estimates, the estimate was about $40,000 to do the fixing the cracks and painting those two courts, and then extending and doing, moving fences and everything else.